Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Y'all know I'm Baptist. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This is the public hearing and public meeting of the Committee of the whole regarding bills numbers 240179, 240180, 240181, 240182, and Resolution Number 240193. Ms. Loghead, will you please call the role to take attendance?
Councilmember Squilla, Councilmember Gautier, Councilmember Jones, Councilmember Young, Councilmember Driscoll, Councilmember Lazada, Councilmember Bass, Councilmember Phillips, Councilmember O'Neal, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, Councilmember Thomas, Councilmember Harity, Councilmember Ahmad, Councilmember Landau, Councilmember Brooks, Councilmember O'Rourke, Council President Johnson.
President. Thank you. A cool month. The committee is present, and this hearing is now called to order. Ms. Loghead, will you please read the title of the resolutions?
Bill Number 240179, in ordinance to adopt the operating budget for fiscal year 2025. Bill Number 240180, in an ordinance amending Chapter 191800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "School Tax Authorization to Provide for an Increase in the Tax that the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia is Authorized to Impose on Real Estate," and amending Chapter 191300 entitled "Real Estate Taxes to Establish an Equivalent Reduction in the Tax Rate for the City Real Estate Tax and Making Technical Changes in All Under Certain Terms and Conditions. Bill Number 240181, in ordinance to adopt a fiscal year 2025 capital budget. Bill Number 240182, in ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2025, 2030 inclusive. Resolution Number 240193, providing for the approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the City of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2025 through 2029 and incorporating revisions with respect to fiscal year 2024, which is to be submitted by the Mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority pursuant to an intergovernmental cooperation agreement by and between the city and the authority.
Today, we will continue the public hearing of the Committee of the whole to consider the bills read by the clerk that constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal year 2025, a capital program, and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2030. Today, we will hear from the administration regarding the administration's finances. This morning, we will hear testimony from the Department of Finance and the Department of Revenue. This afternoon, we were originally scheduled to hear testimony from the Sinking Fund, the Board of Pensions, and the Treasurers. Given the overlap of these departments' duties, these departments are available for questioning this morning. This afternoon, we will continue with questions from members on these departments, and at 3:00 p.m., we will hold our first three public testimony sessions. For the record, I want to note the presence of Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, Councilmember Mark Squillip, and Councilmember Jamie Gardiere. And also Councilmember Cindy Bass. And Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke. He was already signed in. Ms. Loghead, will you please call the first witness to testify from the administration?
The first person to testify from the administration is Rob Dubow, Finance Director.
Welcome back, Rob. Just state your name and title officially for the record, and then you can begin your testimony.
It's been a long time since I've heard.
It has been a long time.
Morning, Council President and members of the committee. My name is Rob Dubow. I'm the Finance Director. I'm joined at the table by First Deputy Kat Lamb. With us today are deputies from around Finance, and as you said, the City Treasurer, Revenue Commissioner, and Executive Director of the Pension Board are all here, too. Before I go into my testimony, I just wanted a moment to thank all the people who work in Finance. All the stuff we talked about today couldn't happen without them. So you have my written testimony, so I won't go through that. We're all available to answer questions. I also have testimony on the tax bill. Should I do that now, too? Okay. So, good morning. Writing testimony on Bill Number 240180. The bill proposes a shift in the division of the real estate tax between the school district and the city, increasing the portion that goes to the district and establishing an equivalent reduction in the portion that goes to the city. The change would increase the school district's portion from 55% to 56%. That would result in approximately $22 million in new funding for the district in FY25 and $129 million over the course of the five-year plan. It would allow the district to benefit from any growth in real estate value. In the city, the mileage shift supports the mayor's goal of providing world-class education for Philadelphia students of all ages and socioeconomic backgrounds, and supports future planning for the multi-year rollout of the mayor's full-day, year-round school initiative, enabling students to receive the educational enrichment they need throughout the year. And thank you for the opportunity to testify. We are all here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Rob. So before we get started, just had a couple of questions, just based upon, one, the American Rescue Plan funding that goes away in 2024, and a couple of my colleagues and I had discussions around when this funding goes away. Some say it's going to be a fiscal cliff, but what are we doing to make sure that we're fiscally stable as we move forward, as those funds go away? We know that those funds also were used for a variety of different programs, such as our rental assistance aversion program, as well as the free transit program we provided, free transportation through SEPTRE, those type initiatives that were shored up by the American Rescue Funds. How are we going to look at, from a fiscal stability standpoint, stabilizing our budget and those type of programs moving forward?
Yep. So one of the things that differentiates Philadelphia from other jurisdictions is we have to do a five-year plan, and we have to show that that plan is balanced in each of its five years. So we show in our five-year plan the art money going away at the end of, well, in the middle of FY25, the end of this calendar year, and then we show a balanced plan throughout. So by having to plan for five years, that's how kind of we show that stability after the art money is gone.
Thank you, Rob. As you previously testified, the city uses an outside economic metric firm to provide growth projections for our city's revenues. These are then used to determine how much revenue the city is projected to have in the coming years. In a response provided to my office, you stated that economists provided a range of growth scenarios. Can you first please share an overview of those growth projections, and then talk to us about how you determines what projections to use?
Yeah, so they had, and we talked about this yesterday, they think that because of kind of the rapid job growth, we see in that job growth will slow down, they showed us a range of anywhere from basically no job growth to half a percent a year, where we wound up, and this is in the middle of years, we wound up at about a quarter percent a year, so kind of in the middle of the range we discussed with them. They also think that inflation will come down, as it's already started to do, and that will have an effect on wages. So both of those things had an impact on our projections.
What's the name of the company that we're using?
It is S&amp;P Global.
Can you say it again?
S&amp;P Global.
S?
S like the letter.
N-P local?
S and P.
Oh, S and P.
Standard and poor.
Standard, okay, all right. The city has its highest combination of credit ratings in more than four decades, which, as you stated in your written testimony, is an important factor in determining the interest rate that the city pays on its borrowing costs for infrastructure investments. How much money has the improved credit rating saved the city on borrowing? And just state for the record our current credit rating as a city.
Yeah, so we are in the A category with all three rating agencies, which is something that hadn't happened in decades. We can get back to you on the savings, because it varies by where the market is, so we'll get you something based on the current market.
Okay, thank you very much. Over the years, a critical piece of the finance goals and key budget investments have been for the Opal project, which will replace the city's existing accounting, contracting, and procurement systems. Can you recap for us when this project started and when it will be fully implemented? What is the cost to date, and how much is budgeted for future costs?
Hi, Kat Lamb, First Deputy Finance Director. So Opal is the project to replace our core financials and purchasing systems. So for those of you who may be familiar with those systems, it's famous, ADPICs, ACIS, and PHL contracts. It's replacing it with Workday, which is a modern-day ERP solution, so it's going to be more connective between all of the data in those four systems. The project initially kicked off in 2019, when we started resourcing for the project director and other people to lead the project. It was delayed due to the pandemic, but we kicked off with our service, our system implementer Accenture, this past November, so that's when things really, really started picking up. We are closing, finishing out the initial design session, going into the next phase, which is continuation of design over the summer. The projected start date of the system right now is June or July of 2026, but I will say that we are reevaluating that based off of learning we've done with Accenture and as we go through the design, right? So the more we learn about exactly what we're going to do, the more we have to reevaluate when we want to do it.
Rob, why the 2026 and not sooner? Just asking.
It's a very complex, it's a very large project. So the capital in the six-year program right now for it is $107 million, so it is not a small endeavor. It is replacing all of our core financial and purchasing business processes. These legacy systems have been in operation, some of them for 40 years, so almost as old as, you know. So there's a lot to have to reevaluate and to manage the risk of this, right? Doing these large system implementations, because it touches everything in government, when they're working, they're working smoothly behind the scenes, and you don't even know that they're there paying our vendors, getting contracts in place, right? Creating our budget documentation documents and all that stuff. When things go wrong, they can really, really go wrong. So part of also the planning effort that takes in the design work is to really manage the risk of the complexity and the change that it's going to introduce.
Okay, thank you. The city received $163 million in Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Fund to support Philadelphia's recovery from Hurricane Ida. The city was required to complete a needs assessment and submit an action plan, which was approved by HUD, and is now embarking on planning and implementing this program. Based on the unmet needs assessment, how much does the $163 million cover, and what portion of the needs assessment cannot be met by these funds? And what is the plan from the city to address these unmet needs in communities most at risk at flooding? And this is an issue near and dear to me, particularly as relates to the neighborhood of Eastwick, southwest Philadelphia, who we see continually flooding year after year.
Yeah, I'm going to ask a deputy Finance Director, should I bring you in, or do you want Pat? Okay. Patrick Clark is going to come up and answer that.
I think we're good. Okay. My name is Pat Clark. I'm the CDBG DR Project Director for Finance, and I think the question was about the unmet needs assessment for our CDBG DR grant program. It's a Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. $163 million is allocated by HUD to the City of Philadelphia, two allocations, and that equals our total of $163 million. Last year, we did an unmet needs assessment, where we combined and compiled data about the relief that was provided to Philadelphia, and also the needs that were identified through various data sources, like FEMA individual assistance, FEMA public assistance, Small Business Administration support, as well as local sources from departments. We identified over $1 billion in unmet needs tied to Hurricane Ida. That obviously far surpasses the total allocation, so we've programmed our budget proportional to that need. The biggest need was in housing. The second biggest need was in infrastructure. There is also a need in economic revitalization, and that is applied to the city as a whole. So we're currently going through the process of refining our current budget to target areas more specifically. For Eastwick, we're doing close collaboration with Sustainability OEM. There are a lot of ongoing community engagement initiatives occurring, so we're using their support to help guide our mitigation funding for the CDBG DR grant program.
The portion where you talked about restructuring the budget, particularly if it focuses on some of the housing unmet needs, could you provide that to the chair, just so we can also look at how does that play a role in the administration meeting the 30,000 units of housing in the City of Philadelphia?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm understanding your question correctly. You'd like more information about how we're programming the housing?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
That would be definitely helpful, just to make sure we're aligning the targeted goals to reach the 30,000 units. That would be helpful, so we're all on the same page, and also how we could be supportive as well.
Yes, and it's a citywide program, so we're working with neighborhoods across the city, including Manayunk, East Falls, any area that was impacted by Hurricane Ida.
Okay, awesome. In terms of tax revenue, Mr. Dubow, in 2022, I introduced a Save Our Homes Tax Relief Plan. The city expanded the Senior Citizens Tax Freeze Program and the Long-Time Owner Occupants Program, which known as Loop, as well as expanded the homestead exemption from $45,000 to $80,000 to provide much-needed property tax relief to vulnerable homeowners. And I know we're going to see a property assessment at some point in time in the future, and we'll get a chance to see what neighborhoods are impacted the most. And also, as we look at the issue of gentrification, as we still see the rapid development taking place throughout the City of Philadelphia, we want to make sure as many long-term residents have an opportunity to stay inside their home. Of the eligible homeowners, what percentage are receiving relief from 2024, and how does that compare to prior years? And do we have a plan for enrollment and relief plans as we move forward? I think someone talked about maybe streamlining all of our tax relief programs under one particular vehicle, so to speak, so individuals can go online at one particular portal to apply for all of the, actually, no, that's Kendra Brooks introduced legislation with Nicholas O'Rourke to figure out how do we streamline that process, but could you give us an update on where we're at?
So Deputy Revenue Commissioner Rebecca Lopez-Christ will talk about the percentage of folks who are enrolled, and I think we'll have to get back to you on the program you're talking about.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Rebecca Lopez-Christ, Deputy Commissioner for Policy and Outreach. In answer to your question, Council President, currently, we estimate 75% of eligible households are receiving some sort of assistance. That's either homestead, loop, or the senior freeze. That doesn't count people who maybe have an UPA.
75%?
Mm-hmm.
Now, do you have this data broken down? This is Loop, this is homestead, this is senior citizens tax freeze?
I do have that, and I have that currently by zip code.
By zip code?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can you provide that to the chair as well?
Absolutely.
And then also, Rob, I don't know if you can provide this to me now or maybe later, just wanted to see based upon the total amount of funds that were available, right, that we allocated for senior citizens tax freeze, homestead, and loop, based upon that 75% that was used, the remaining dollars, that number, because that stays inside the general fund, correct? Because it's not being used?
Yes, but also what we should do, we get back to you, is tell you what we assume for percentage participation, because we don't assume 100% participation.
Could you bring the microphone a little closer? Go ahead.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah. Also, when we get back to you with that, we'll also tell you what percent participation we assume, because we don't assume 100% participation.
100, okay, all right. Mr. Dubow, your testimony cites launching an outreach index mapping in FY25 to help revenue, city council, and other stakeholders focus outreach efforts in areas of the city that are most needed for tax relief. Can you tell us more about this effort, and what is the budget for outreach for tax relief programs?
As part of the Department of Revenue's DEI initiative, we took a look at ways that the Department of Revenue can address needs in a more focused way, and one of the projects that we completed is a mapping project that we will be able to make public to you and to the, to City Council that overlays estimated owner-occupied properties, the percentage of folks who are enrolled in a program, demographic information, and so it's almost like you can see exactly where the gaps are on a map of where we need to look, where we need to focus our efforts.
Okay. Is there a marketing and social media plan?
Absolutely. I mean, the Department of Revenue has a very robust outreach group, and as you remember, Vicki Riley was our champion, and she did over 350 in-person events a year. We have a new person, that's Joy McCoy. We also have, we also do social media. We're on all, we're on YouTube, LinkedIn, X, and Facebook. We also do videos, how-to videos. I think the most effective thing for us to do, though, is to partner with City Council. No one wants to talk to us. They want to talk to their elected officials, and they feel more heard, or they feel some sort of advocacy, and I think it's a better outcome when we're able to do, let's say, a pop-up neighborhood event where the letters have come from City Council. That sort of thing is an example.
And we've done several very successful ones in South Philadelphia, as well as southwest Philadelphia. Have your team been proactive in reaching out and touching base with district council members regarding planning these type of events as you move forward, knowing we're going to be assessing properties, and then we're going to have first level of review, some people going to appeal? How are your team preparing for this upcoming reassessment of properties as we move forward to make sure we're in front of the issue as opposed to behind?
So one of the things that we did this year was provide City Council with an assistance program cheat sheet, something that staff could just have like next to the phone. We've also been sending regular updates via email to City Council, including staff, to kind of inform them of what's happening, were changes to the rules, you know, like Councilmember Lazada extended the date for Loop last year, and also there were some changes to how we interpreted properties in that, in that program. So we've been trying to make sure that City Council is up to date with what it is that we're doing, as well as reach out individually to say, Joy McCoy is our new person, she's our new outreach coordinator.
Bless.
And, you know, and she's the person that we can work with to schedule events with you.
All right, thank you, Rebecca. And last question for yourself. Are there any special programs to help seniors around the first level of review, walking them through that process when it comes to appealing their property taxes? Because a lot of times during constituent services, I've seen individuals get the sticker shot of their taxes going up, doubling and tripling, and then also there's a disconnect between our local banking industry and the appeals process, where the banks get the notice that the property tax goes up, and then you'll see your mortgage like double and triple, and then you're going to the appeal, but they are already charging you, kind of eat up your escrow at the same time while you're going through that process. And then once your appeal goes through, if your appeal becomes successful, then there's a whole process that the average person normally don't know about to help you get your refund from the bank. Have we done anything to try to make the connection between the banking industry and when we're dealing with first levels of review and the appeals process to help individuals who are stuck in that type of situation?
Let me defer to the Revenue Commissioner Kathleen McCulgan.
Good morning, Council President and members of City Council. My name is Kathleen McCulgan. I'm Revenue Commissioner. So your question is, have we done anything to partner with banking institutions to help ease some of the challenges that customers face when they have had an appeal, their property value has been recertified, and to make sure that we bridge the gap there? Is that correct?
Absolutely, correct.
Okay. I'm happy to say that we have. With the implementation of the Philadelphia Tax Center, we partnered very closely with lending institutions to improve our data communication with them. So they now have a secure login that they can utilize in the Philadelphia Tax Center to log in and to basically at any time look at the amounts that are due for their parcels. So if a recert has been processed, they can go run that report and receive the most up-to-date information on the taxes due.
Okay, thank you very much. And last, how do we work with seniors who may not know how to navigate this process? And I don't know if this is for Rebecca as well, but when it comes to first level of view, going beyond first level of view, when you want to, you know, basically go to court to challenge your property assessment?
I think that our outreach efforts in communities is the best way that we can reach seniors. I know that our outreach and communications teams, they do go to senior centers and make sure that they're reaching out to communities where, you know, they're most likely to be able to provide assistance to seniors. So, and I think that we really offer assistance to any program for which they may be eligible and guide them through the processes. So again, I think it's a little bit more of making sure that we get the word out and that we're reaching out to those who are eligible, which is why we appreciate the partnership with City Council offices.
Awesome. And what banks have y'all partnered with in terms of, you have specific banks that we have partnered with to work with us?
For real estate tax? We have several different ones. They're not all, I don't think, well-known as banking institutions. One of the largest ones is called CoreLogic, and so... One of the largest ones is called CoreLogic, and so they actually escrow and remit on behalf of many different lending institutions. I think there's a list of probably about eight to 10 different institutions that we partner with.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. DeBeau, in accordance with pass of bill number 220485 in 2002, revenue will complete regulations for market-based sourcing and pursue state authorizing legislation. If enacted, this change aligns Philadelphia business tax rules with other jurisdictions and better reflects business activity in Philadelphia. This is a recommendation that's come from prior tax reform efforts. As we reconvene the Tax Reform Commission, what are other areas that should be focused on by the Tax Reform Commission as relates to the tax structure and regulatory environment to make our city more competitive and business-friendly, from your expertise of being around here for some time?
Yeah, and I also want to talk about some of the things that have happened since the other tax reform commissions have come in place. There have been really significant changes, particularly on the BERT. So the number of businesses that have to, that are subject to BERT has decreased by about two-thirds, and then within the last couple of years, we changed to they don't have to file. So that has become much simpler, particularly for smaller businesses. And then businesses that hire, I think it's at least six people, don't have to pay for their first two years.
Three in the first year.
Right, three in the first year, three in the second. So a lot of structural changes to the, to the BERT have already happened. I think on the market-based sourcing has not passed the state yet.
That's correct.
But do you want to talk about anything else on the business tax and things we could do to make it simpler?
I think just implementing the Philadelphia Tax Center has made it a lot easier for people to be in compliance, and we've gotten a lot of good feedback. I think making, making businesses' responsibilities and rights very clear is something that I think we've done a better job of in the last, you know, eight years or so. And so structurally, structurally, I think it's a bigger, yeah, it's a bigger conversation.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, I'll pull that away a little bit. Based on member Isaiah Thomas's questions that I heard in here in chambers, but also in other briefings, what is the plan for the drop in real estate value center city and the fact that many investors, based on interest rate bumps, are simply just walking away? And what is the conversion rate from commercial to residential, and how does that impact our dollars?
So in terms of how we've handled the, the lost protected losses in the five-year plan, we've assumed that appeal losses will equal about $1 billion this year. So when we look at our projections, we assume those losses. And then we assume after that loss that commercial values would be relatively, will be flat this year and then grow kind of at inflation going forward.
The difference in square footage, commercial, the difference in square footage taxable, residential, what's the?
Yeah, so for most, we are different from some other jurisdictions in that we much more residential than commercial. I think that the, that the office sector is about 7% of our, of our property tax, so it's relatively small. There's a big hit because some of, you know, there's some big losses, but so it's, it's relatively small.
My next question is, we, several administration, well, years ago, cited that tax delinquent property owners that did not live in the city, were using these properties as investments, weren't paying, ignoring all of our efforts to collect. We then said it might be good if we attached their properties in the counties in which they live. How has that made a difference? Have we implemented that aspect of it, and has it positively impacted collections?
Yeah, I'll ask the Revenue Commissioner to, or they're deciding who will come up. Okay, Frances Beckley will answer that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Frances Beckley, Chief Counsel of the Revenue Department. Unfortunately, the Act 93 project, which attaches liens to properties in this, basically, we focused on the suburb, outlying suburbs, has not proved as effective as we had hoped. One of the major challenges there is typically investors will have their primary residence out there. It'll be very valuable, but it will be jointly owned, and their city real estate will be in either their individual name or an entity name. So in the last fiscal year, we've, we only realized 113,000 in collections from that program.
How do we get around that loophole so that people, investors from different parts of Pennsylvania and even beyond, get to leave our properties tax delinquent and keep their residences safe from our collection efforts? How do we, how do we reconcile it?
Unfortunately, I'm not aware of any legal strategy that will allow you to move a liability from something that's owned by an individual to something that's owned by, by a different entity or individual. What we have focused on in terms of investors' delinquent real estate taxes is filing what we call consolidated actions. We used to file individual off, actions for water or real estate or LNI demolition liens against properties individually, and we have now, with our better data, started filing suits where we take a landlord who's basically been using us as their bank. Every time they want to sell a property or refinance it, they'll bring it current, but the rest of the time, they just let their city liabilities hang out there. And instead, we sue them in their, in their personal capacity for all the various municipal liens they owe on all of their properties. I mean, some of these actions have 50 different properties put in there, and when we get the judgment in that action, that judgment then attaches to every one of those properties so that, that the landlord cannot refinance or sell any of those properties without coming and getting in compliance with us with all that his, his or her liabilities.
And let me say this for the record, non-residential, non-occupied properties, member Brooks, O'Rourke, and Rue Landau right behind me, not talking about any of them, but what does New York do that we don't to make sure that people pay? And how do we compare to them? You, you, you mess around with New York, they will come after you, take their, that property. How, what do they do that we don't?
I would have to get back to you on that. I'm not aware of, of New York's tactics. I will say that in the state of Pennsylvania, we have the best sheriff sale process under MCTLA. It's significantly better than what the other counties have. They have to do a, they have to do two rounds of sales to R1, and that's been a tremendous tool for us in the last, particularly now that we have owner-occupied payment agreements so that we feel comfortable that we are not sheriff sailing owner-occupied residences. We've been able to be more aggressive with sheriff sale, and it's very effective both in collecting revenue and also in getting nuisance and underutilized properties back into the hands of somebody who cares about them and will develop them.
Can you provide to the President's Office an analysis comparing Philadelphia to places like New York, Washington, and maybe even Baltimore? See how they are approaching this? As our properties become more valuable and our revenues, as stated by you, are going down, we might need to tighten that up a little bit? Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you to the Departments of Finance and Departments of Revenue for joining us today and working with us to understand your budgets and priorities. Looking forward to working together, our office certainly, to ensure our city tax and finance systems are both keeping the city and working people financially stable. For the last three or four years, the Budget Office's Education Engagement and Impact Unit has been holding citywide community engagement sessions, as I understand it, to educate the public about the budget process and to incorporate community voices into the budgetary goals of the administration. Just this past fall, the Budget Office engaged with nearly 800 Philadelphians to collect feedback on the budget. I want to pause and recognize the critical importance of that mission and to thank the Budget Office and all the community partners that contribute to this work. Philadelphians who don't have the time to make it to City Hall for a hearing or might be turning in, tuning in now while, while on the clock, they, they need to have different venues and arenas by which to participate in this process. I think it would be better for all if that's possible. However, we've recently been informed by community partners that the FY25 spring engagement sessions have been put on hold indefinitely by the administration. So that the budgeting process can be informed directly by the people of Philadelphia, will this program continue?
Yes, we're just trying to figure out kind of the, the best way to do it going forward.
Any ideas so far in terms of, like specifically about what the new administration wants that engagement to look like, especially for the remainder of this budget cycle, any ideas that are kind of already coming up as you're thinking about it?
Yeah, I think we're kind of in the early stages of figuring that out, but we'll get back to you with, with more detail.
I'd like to turn now to discussing taxes and revenue. I want to acknowledge and applaud the work that was already been done to create and expand the existing tax refund and exemption programs, including the low-income wage tax refund, homestead exemption, Loop, UPA, senior tax freeze, and the Water Department's TAP program, all of these, which are absolutely essential for stabilizing the most vulnerable Philadelphians, and thanks to the President of this body for asking a similar question a little earlier. As far as I understand, the Water Department has been working closely with the Office of Integrated Data for Evidence and Action to automatically enroll eligible Philadelphians in the TAP program by taking advantage of data sharing and cross-enrollment. This is a huge development and a really exciting step forward in cutting through the red tape to automatically enroll Philadelphians in the programs that they need. Something that we really, really want to do in our office is to make these sorts of things easier to be able to access by folks. That said, as far as I understand, for one of our most important tax exemption programs for homeowners, the homestead exemption, it's estimated that a fifth of eligible homeowners are not enrolled in this program. That's a huge missed opportunity to actually help more people stay in their homes, even though the number may be small. What's the plan to use data sharing and cross-enrollment efforts to try to auto-enroll 100% of eligible homeowners in the homestead exemption?
Yeah, I think there are some state law issues that complicate that, but I'll ask Revenue to come up and, and fill in the details.
Good morning, Councilmember.
Good morning.
Thank you for the question. We have, I appreciate that we share the same goal of expanding assistance programs for all that are eligible. We certainly have made great strides in doing that over the years. And as you mentioned, we recently, very recently, auto-enrolled many customers into water assistance programs. In terms of homestead, the challenges, the, there's challenges in utilizing data and matching it accurately for all programs, but there's, I think, additional limitations and further complexity on the tax side in doing that. So for homestead specifically, we do not have data that accurately reflects properties that are owner-occupied, which is why we do all of that we can in reaching out to property owners, to let them know about the program, to assist them in enrolling in it. The application has, you know, is very simple and I think easy for homeowners to fill out, and also, like I said, we offer support in doing that as well. So there really is no one source of data that we have been able to identify to expand homestead. And I'll also just say, on the tax side, in terms of other tax relief programs, we are bound by laws of confidentiality that also really limit what we can do with that data. So we look forward to continuing to work with City Council members and the administration to identify new ways to do that, but it certainly is a challenge and not something that we can easily implement.
It's a legal thing, okay. I don't know if this is helpful then. I'm going to move on. Another absolutely crucial component of stabilizing the most vulnerable Philadelphians is holding predatory landlords accountable and enforcing the rental code that keeps Philadelphia renters safe in their homes. Half of Philadelphians are renters, something that we should always keep at the front of our mind, and almost half of Philadelphians' rental properties are in states of disrepair that can actually jeopardize the resident's safety. For instance, doors with secure or insecure locks, homes with lead, mold, animal infestation, leaking and caving roofs. Meanwhile, only 7% of Philadelphia's rental units are inspected each year, and often code violations are not enforced on landlords. The Department of Revenue's budget testimony states that Revenue has a plan to utilize tools available in the Philadelphia Tax Center to improve tax and water data matching to identify landlords with multiple property delinquencies for ses, excuse me, sequestrance, sequestration and consolidated actions. I hope I said that correctly. That's a quote. Can you speak to what this plan entails?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you for the question. Sequestration is a very important tool for us in collection, and it also provides protections for tenants because we are appointing a court-ordered sequester to take over the rents that are paid so that they can pay off the delinquencies of the property, and that protects tenants from water service disconnections and sheriff sales and strong enforcement action like that. So in terms of what we reported in our testimony for the improvement in data use, the Philadelphia Tax Center has a data warehouse that allows us to better analyze and aggregate data from all of our systems so that we can identify those landlords and also pursue them in a more efficient way.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Jim Harrell.
Thank you, Council President, colleagues. Rob, my, my questions have to do with the real estate also.
Thanks.
And I'm just going to give you all three questions. That way you can just answer them, and if you have to get back to us with information, that'll be fine. Real estate tax, how, how many properties owe back taxes here right now that we know of? What is the average amount owed in back taxes on the per-property basis? And when these properties are put up for sheriff sale, what is the percentage of back taxes that the city collects?
Thank you for the question, Councilman. I think I'm going to need to get back to you on at least two of them. I'm just going to look real quick and see if I have the answer to your first question. In response to your first question, the number of properties that have delinquency, there's just over 67,000 properties that have delinquency.
All right, and then Councilman Jones had asked my, my fourth question, but just a, a follow-up to that. So how can we expand the outreach to determine the number of owner-occupied properties?
I do not believe that we have data that allows us to accurately determine which properties are owner-occupied, but... properties are owner-occupied, but what we've done recently and we're just finalizing is a mapping of the city of Philadelphia that creates a scoring that allows us to understand which parts of the city need outreach the most. And that scoring includes median income levels, and it's by census tract, median income levels, the number of children in that area that are enrolled in assistance programs, the number of properties that are tax delinquent, and the number of properties that are delinquent with water, so that we can focus outreach in that area. And once this mapping is complete, our plan is to reach out to council members in those districts to see how we can best partner with you and other agencies in the mayor's administration to conduct outreach in that area.
Okay, and then just one more question. The policies for tax clearance, when the property doesn't owe taxes but owes commercial tax fees or something similar to that?
I'm sorry, what the process is, your question?
Yes. What's the policies?
Okay, so for tax clearance, anybody who is seeking to essentially do business with the city, they're seeking to get a license or a permit from LNI, they want to open a business account, they are applying for a refund, or a vendor who's doing business with the city, they have to be tax compliant. So we have an interface with license and inspections that does not reveal any confidential information, but simply indicates whether somebody is compliant or not. And if they are not, then they need to respond to, I'm sorry, they need to come to Revenue so that we can help them come into compliance. That process has been significantly improved with the Philadelphia Tax Center. Customers can go online and print a tax clearance certificate themselves. They could do that prior to the Philadelphia Tax Center, but the difference now is that they can go in, log into their account, and actually see why they're not compliant and work to resolve it there.
Okay. Are we advertising that this system exists now? Because this is the first I've heard of it here.
The Philadelphia Tax Center?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. We have, we went live with the first phase of that in the fall of '21, which was most of our business taxes. We went live with the second phase in the fall of '22, and then we went live with a third phase, which replaced our cashiering system in the fall of last year. And throughout that entire process, we, our communications team did a really excellent job of creating videos, tutorials, directing, and explaining what to expect during each of those processes. So that's all on our website, and I think that those videos have been very helpful to people who are adjusting to new processes with the system.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the administration. Thank you for the testimony yesterday. Couple questions. So first, I'm a big fan and a huge supporter of the administration's recommendation around moving 55, moving from 55% to 56% of real estate taxes going to the school district. I'm wondering, what is the administration's overall vision as it relates to real estate taxes going specifically to the school district? Does the administration anticipate coming back before this body and asking us to look at those numbers again in the near future?
Not this fiscal year. Obviously something that each year as we do our plans and budget, we will look at and decide whether there are any changes that we want to propose.
But do you think that this is something that you'll have an appetite for in the future, or do you anticipate it being a one-time ask?
I can't commit either way at this point. I think it's something that we're going to evaluate every year.
Okay, I think that would be important for us to know so we can understand what we want to do as it relates to the percentage of real estate taxes that goes to the schools. Earlier in your testimony, you said 7% of real estate taxes, the revenue from real estate taxes come from commercial businesses, correct?
From offices.
From offices, okay.
The overall non-residential is probably about 15%.
About 15?
Yeah.
Okay, so that means that based on your numbers, 85% of the real estate tax comes from residents, right? So when you talk about an 8% increase in the income that we expect on real estate tax and combine that with the fact that you anticipate losing over $1 billion from commercial businesses, you're basically anticipating the bulk of that money being paid off of the backs of middle-class folks, which is the same demographic of people who's choosing to leave our city. Is that correct?
Just one clarification. What we're assuming is an 8% increase on the residential side, and then that appeal loss and 0% increase on the commercial side. So the overall, we talked about this yesterday, is in the like 4.5% to 5% range. That 8% is just on residential.
So what I'm asking is, the same demographic that you're expecting to see this increase from is the same demographic of people who are choosing to leave the city of Philadelphia? Is that correct? When we look at our population issues, a lot of the people who are choosing to leave the city of Philadelphia are working, middle-class people, correct?
So the tax is on everybody who owns a property, not just middle-class people, and the homestead at $80,000 gives more relief to a home that has lower value because it's a bigger percent of that value, right? So if you had...
This is what I'm saying. I'm saying that when we're looking at the population change in the city of Philadelphia, the same demographic that is choosing to leave the city of Philadelphia is the same demographic of people that we're relying on as it relates to real estate taxes and who we anticipate the new revenue coming from, correct?
I don't think so. What I'm trying to say is I don't think so because of the various relief measures we have.
Okay, so we can agree to disagree on that one again, right? Because homestead and Loop are phenomenal programs, but we talked about yesterday how a large percentage of our city who actually need to take advantage of these programs don't necessarily get the information in time. So with that being said, out of our top 10 employers in the city of Philadelphia, how many of those folks pay real estate taxes?
Out of our top 10, sorry?
Employers, out of the top 10, the 10 folks who provide the most jobs to people in the city of Philadelphia, how many of those folks pay real estate taxes?
So I don't have that in front of me, but I know that there are a number of those that are nonprofits that do not pay real estate taxes on all of their properties. Even nonprofits pay some real estate, so if they have a commercial activity, they'll pay on that, but for a large...
Give us an example of that, of which to refer to.
So, for example, if you're Penn and you have commercial properties that you own, you'd be paying property tax on that.
So how much do you think we get from Penn per year in property taxes?
I have to get back to you.
Okay. So based on what I see, the majority of our employers in the city of Philadelphia are government agencies like the City of Philadelphia, SEPTA, and things of that capacity, hospitals, and nonprofit organizations such as Temple and UPenn. Based on our analysis, out of the top 10 employers in the city of Philadelphia, the only one who pays real estate taxes is Comcast, and we know that they have franchise agreements and other subsidies from the city of Philadelphia as it relates to real estate taxes. So based on your testimony, 15% of our real estate revenue comes from non-residential spaces. What is the administration's plan, similar to Councilmember Jones's question, what is the administration's plan to move that number from 15% to a higher space?
Yeah, so that number becomes a higher, the more that we have people in relief programs, the more programs that we offer, that means that residential properties are paying less tax, more the tax would come on the commercial side.
So yeah, I'm sorry, can you answer that again?
Yeah, so to the extent that we have relief programs and they're on the residential side, it means we're getting less revenue on the residential side and more on the commercial side.
Okay, so just to paraphrase, your vision is to offer more incentives and programs to residents so that a larger percentage of the real estate taxes come from businesses instead of residents?
That's what we've been doing over time, right? By offering more relief programs, that's the impact of that.
Why not do things to try to attract more businesses?
Of course, we want to do that too.
So what's your vision around that? How do we attract more businesses that will pay real estate taxes?
Yeah, as we talked about yesterday, we want to make the city safer, cleaner, a more attractive place for people to come to.
Philadelphia is one of the poorest big cities in the entire country. 21% of our city lives in poverty. From a tax perspective, what incentives are we offering to encourage business growth and better jobs here in the city of Philadelphia?
So we offer a number of job tax credits.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about like new things, like in this year's budget, like I know what we do in the past. I'm saying, clearly that's not working. We've been the poorest big city for a long time. So what innovative approaches are you all recommending to address some of the poverty issues that we have from a tax-based perspective?
Yeah, so we're not, in this budget and plan, we're not attacking that from a tax basis, we're attacking it from an investment basis. We're attacking it from the things we've been talking about, about, you know, increasing what we spend on public safety, increasing what we put into workforce development. It's a different approach.
Thank you, Council President. I know my time is up. We definitely recognize that it's a different approach, and I think all of us who travel across the city of Philadelphia will agree that the city needs to be cleaner, and we need to do a lot about public safety. But I do think that we can do both at the same time. I think that we can ensure this city is cleaner, we can do things around public safety, but we also really have to take a critical look at this issue around poverty, job growth, business growth, and especially black and brown businesses. The city of Philadelphia is one of the worst cities in the entire country as it relates to giving black and brown businesses the opportunity to grow, expand, and remain here. If a business, we've recently seen an article where a business chose to go to Conshohocken instead of Philadelphia. The Philadelphia suburbs is one of the most economically thriving suburbs for any major city in the entire country, and we have to at some point have the hard conversation about why people choose to go to Conshohocken and Plymouth Meeting and all these other places instead of Philadelphia. And I can assure you that safety and cleaning green is not the only reason. If I'm going to have 15% to 20% more profit in my bottom line by going outside of the county and can still enjoy all the great things that we fight for, at some point we have to have that tough conversation about why businesses choose to do that. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for your overview on the administration's priorities. I want to focus my questions this morning on revenue. This upcoming fiscal cycle will have the most, will have most of our federal dollars from COVID pandemic relief coming to a close. Because of that, I want to make sure that we are not just looking at this proposed budget, but what this budget signals may be coming out, well, coming in the outlying years of the five-year strategic plan. So according to that plan, the administration identifies one of the challenges we face is in major sources of revenue driving up and the tax base that faces challenges. Much of the administration's plan around this is push into the next budget cycle to take into consideration recommendations from the Tax Reform Commission. The Inquirer had stated, "The lineup appears favorable towards business interests." So I'm interested to see what is the criteria the administration has for this commission? Like, how are people being picked on the commission, and will community organizations or members of the public be able to make recommendations to the mayor?
So the commission was actually set up by a council resolution. It has members, four appointees from the administration, four from council, four from the chamber, and one from the controller. And I think those slots are in the process of being figured out right now.
So one of the things, when we looked it up, we saw six seats for the chamber on this commission, and I want to know, what is the administration's plan to ensure diversity of opinion? So will there be spaces for those who hold a view that more revenue is needed for good city services?
When we look at who we will be appointing, yes, that'll be one of the things that we consider.
So what is the expected timeline for the completion of the Tax Reform Commission's work?
I mean, it's not our commission, so I don't want to be presumptuous. You want to defer to the Council President on that question?
Sure, we're in the process now of aligning up the appointees and to get the process started. We expect recommendations to come out of the commission for this upcoming budget process as well as a long-term strategy on how we evaluate our tax structure system as a whole. And so I'm looking forward, so once I get the appointees from the administration, hopefully as early as next week to start the process. Just waiting, we have our appointees, we're just waiting and giving the administration some time to give us stairs, but obviously the goal was to kick this thing off next week. That's the timeline that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. So given the pending 2025 fiscal cliff that PICA referenced, and especially with the ARPA money running out at the end of this year, how is the administration thinking about solutions that won't negatively affect working Philadelphians and communities?
Yeah, and we show that through our five-year plan. So the plan has the ART money going away, it has, you know, the big pension obligation bond payment in '29, and it still stays positive in each of its, each of its years with the investments that we've been talking about over the last couple of days.
So knowing that the cuts to the wage tax and BERT tax directly impact communities as it cuts into our revenue for public services such as parks and libraries, if such tax cuts are proposed, where would the administration consider cutting budgets to pay for these tax cuts?
So we don't look at it in that trade-off. I mean, we do look at tax cuts as an investment that are designed to help grow the budget over long-term, and I think the disagreement that we're having now is what's the best investment to grow the economy, not whether these are all, you know, legitimate investments.
So the city is currently in negotiation, I'm on to my next one, with the public sector unions for new contracts. In the budget, there is a bucket of money set aside to pay for wage and benefits increases. If this amount turns out to be insufficient, how might the city increase revenue in order to close that budget gap?
So what we do every time we have a collective bargaining agreement is look at how it relates to whatever we've set aside, and then we do kind of a holistic approach to figure out how we balance our budget and how we can do that without having an impact on services. So that's a process we'll go through when we see where they come out.
Okay. One of the program's goals that I was happy to see included in the five-year plan was the department, from the Department of Finance, was advocating to eliminate the uniformity clause at the state level. The uniformity clause keeps our residents in poverty by taking billionaires at the same, taxing billionaires at the same rate as our embarrassingly low minimum wage. So State Rep Liz Feedler has recently introduced legislation repealing the clause. So the past administrations have talked about this before but have been unsuccessful. So I'm curious about how the Department of Finance plans to advocate for the repeal of the uniformity clause and what we can do in city councils to help those efforts.
Yeah, I think what we really want to be able to do at the state level is make the case that this is really important to us. So for example, being able to tax different types of property at different rates, like New York does, you talked about New York earlier, that's really helpful. Or maybe looking at whether you have different rates on the wage tax too, so it can become a progressive tax rather than a flat tax. Now, I think there are really important things that you could do if you didn't have the uniformity clause, and part of our job is to explain to the Commonwealth why that's really important, and to the extent that council would partner with us in those, in that advocacy would be really helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair next recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to follow up on something, some conversation that was had with Councilmember Jones, and the conversation brought to mind something that happened with the Revenue Department several years ago that I just wanted to bring attention to and that should never, ever, ever happen again. And I wanted to ask Revenue specifically about, and I think Francis, we had this conversation before, regarding a constituent, a small business, minority small businessman in Germantown who had been out of business for quite some time. who had been out of business for quite some time, and the city of Philadelphia could not find his payroll tax records. And so what they did is they, you know, prompted him and said, we, you know, we don't have a record that you have paid these payroll taxes, you are required to do so, we need those records, or we need the payment ASAP. He had been out of, out of business, and not to mention the fact that it had been probably about fifteen years after the fact that we were asking him for this documentation, and he couldn't find it. The payroll company was non-responsive. And so the city of Philadelphia sued and won in court a judgment saying that these payroll taxes had not been paid, because the city couldn't find them, and the business owner couldn't find them, the payroll company was non-responsive. So fast forward, maybe six months, maybe, yeah, I forget the exact amount of time, this was during the pandemic, but he found the records. And when he went back and found, he found the records, he found the documentation, the payroll company actually finally responded, is what it was, finally responded, provided the documentation to the city of Philadelphia. And I remember specifically that the city had, I don't know what it's called in legal terms, but the city had basically said that, "Ask the judge, please do not admit any additional evidence in this case." And as a result of that, he was unable to submit records that clearly showed that these taxes were paid and that the city could not, just basically couldn't find their records and their documentation. And so I wanted to ask about that particular filing that says that if someone is able to find their documentation, and then the city has already asked the court not to accept any additional documentation, is that a standard practice of how we collect tax revenue or payroll revenue or any other type of revenue in the city of Philadelphia? And I would even further suggest, and maybe we need to legislate, that that's not something we should be doing. We should never say we don't want to see additional documentation, because even if you paid it, we just want to make you pay it again. And so, again, this was a small businessman from Germantown who's out of business and who now has a $60,000 judgment against him from the city of Philadelphia for payroll taxes that he can prove that were paid. So I'd like for there to be some comment on that.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to follow up with you offline on any particular case, I do not remember the incidents of which you're talking. I will say that I'm not, I'm also not aware of my office ever having tried to collect anything twice. We're very scrupulous about that, and we are very clear that our mission, and I stress this with my young lawyers, is to collect the correct amount of tax, not the maximum amount of tax. Once we have somebody, we're not trying to wring the maximum out of them, we're just trying to get them to pay their fair share.
Well, well, thank you for saying that. I'm glad to have you say it on the record, because that's not what was communicated through yourself and also through the previous Revenue Commissioner. We had these conversations, and I was in the courtroom, you know, hoping that we could, you know, have some justice for this particular business owner. And, you know, the Revenue Department was extremely, you know, just firm in their belief that there was no further recourse for this particular business owner, and that because he couldn't find the records when they were requested, that they were not going to give any consideration to the payroll records that were provided by the payroll company. It wasn't something that he went home and doctored up himself, these were official documents. And when he presented them, I specifically remember the response from Revenue, which was basically, "We don't care, we're collecting again, and we don't want, you know, we don't want to see what he's presenting." So that's what I'm asking, is that, you know, that in the, in the future, there should never be any sort of a case in which the city of Philadelphia is saying, "We don't want to see additional evidence," because what we really want, as you just said, what we really want is to get down to the facts.
There's no question that we do not want to collect something a second time. That said, legal processes have deadlines, they have, and if people fail to respond at a certain point, there will be consequences.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because he did respond after the deadline, because the city came back fifteen years later and said that they wanted, said that they wanted to see these payroll taxes and that he hadn't paid, fifteen years. And so if you ask me to dig up something from fifteen years ago, I'm going to have a really hard time doing it.
Again, I can't comment on the specific case, because I don't remember it.
I'll be happy to make you.
Something that's fifteen years old is out of statute, so.
I would be happy to have an offline conversation and to see if it's even still possible for the city of Philadelphia to rectify their part in this matter, because we really, we look badly in this. We look like we took advantage of someone, because we had the power and the authority and the legal muscle to do it, and it just wasn't the right thing. So I look forward to having that conversation with you offline, so, thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you. And that wasn't my question. You know, I wanted to ask about NPI dollars, and if we could get an idea of the $100 million that was spent from last year, and additional monies, how much have we borrowed thus far on NPI?
Two hundred, two hundred million? Yeah, we've, we've borrowed, we've borrowed.
Have we spent down our entire 200 million? Is it all allocated for? Are we doing additional borrowings anytime soon?
We, we have not, we have not spent all the money, and we will borrow again based on cash flow. When we need cash, then we will borrow again.
Okay. So, how much, can you tell us how much of that 200 million has been allocated, roughly?
Jackie Dunn, the city treasurer, is coming up.
Good morning, Jackie Dunn, city treasurer. Thank you. Regarding the NPI borrowings, we've done two $100 million borrowings for funding for the NPI programs, and across both of those borrowings, there are $90 million remaining as of this morning, so they spent around $110 million of the proceeds.
Okay. And what's the timeline on spending down that last 90 million? To get it out the door, so we need these projects? Because we've got so many projects, it takes the city so long to spend money.
Sure, it does take time for capital projects to move through the pipeline. The NPI team has been doing a great job, they consistently requisition for funding. I think historically, over the two years, it's been about $4 million a month. That said, this morning, we got a large requisition, and so the NPI team indicated they're going to do an updated future forecast of spending needs, and then as the Finance Director mentioned, we'll base the timing of the next borrowing on that, so we make sure they have the cash when they need the funds available.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you. I'll come back on my next round, Mr. President, thank you.
Absolutely. Chair recognizes Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all so much for your testimony, and thank you in particular, Rob, for all the work that we were able to do together in the first term, it was a lot of fun. So you know that I was up going through some of the old transcripts and some of the work that we've done over the last four years, but my colleagues have addressed some of the questions that I had already. So if we could just get a copy of the report from S&amp;P Global Market for our review, you could submit it to Council President for dissemination to all members of council?
Yeah, we can, yes, yeah, we can get you that.
Okay.
We can get you, so, a lot of what happens in this conversation, we can send you things that we have in writing from them.
Oh, okay, okay. So whatever you can share, so that we can understand the perspective as well. You know that the, the five-year plan, it proposes about $1.2 billion in new capital investments across the life of the plan. So our ability to afford this sort of significant level of borrowing is predicated upon our credit rating, which you talked about with Council President. And so are we projecting that our debt service costs on the new spending, based on our current ratings, or do we have different scenarios of cost in case of rating decreases?
Yeah, so, this goes back to the question of kind of what cost, how much cost would change for a rating? So we can get you that information on what a change in rating means for cost.
And then, we're still here, the $80 million balloon payment.
Correct, in FY '29, yes.
Right, okay, just want to make sure. And I'm going to skip the, the real estate transfer tax question, I'll submit that for the record, because people ask tangentially about that. Now, the Budget and Brief, it shows that, obviously, we know a 63.5% reduction in the federal dollars from FY '23 to FY '24, but then a 5% increase from FY '24 to '25. Could you just explain that?
In the.
The Budget and Brief.
In revenues from.
Federal dollars.
From federal dollars. It probably has to do with timing of reimbursements, and, so that, that's, sorry, one second. Yeah, that'll be timing of reimbursements for higher costs.
Okay. And, hold on one second, I'm just taking notes here. Okay, and then obviously, we saw the 20% projected increase in the hotel tax, and obviously, that's probably due to PHL 250 and 2026 and MLB. Could you just explain that?
Well, it's partly also because we want to make sure that there are sufficient appropriations if that tax comes in higher than projected, and so we, we have high, that projection's probably higher than will come in, just to make sure we have appropriation power. And they can only spend what comes in, so it doesn't, increasing the projection doesn't mean that they can spend more, they can spend what comes in and nothing more, so we're giving them room in case more comes in.
Just putting that on the record. Also, for public property, in the Budget and Brief, the FY '24 original budget for the sale of our capital assets was 28 million, but the current estimate is 1.2 million, and that's also the estimate for FY '25. Why was the FY '24 original budget so high, and why is the current estimate so low, and why does the proposed FY '25 amount remain flat?
Yeah, so.
That's way off.
Kind of based on the progress we've made in selling assets, it became clear we're not getting them sold quickly. We still have it in the five-year plan, but we don't think it'll be in the first year of the plan.
But that big of a difference?
Yeah, because there are a couple of big sales, and so if they're not happening, then the dollars move further out in the plan.
Can you detail them for the record?
Yeah, I think one of them is the Roundhouse, I think that's the biggest one, and there's obviously a longer process there than we had anticipated.
Okay, any others that you can mention?
I think there's also one of the, the medical facilities as part of kind of an overall change there.
Okay. All right, also in the, the Budget and Brief, the FY '24 original budget for zoning permits was $3.4 million, but the current estimate is $7.3 million, and the proposed budget for FY '25 is $2.4 million. And so with such an increase from the proposed to the actual, why are we now anticipating a drop for FY '25 in this new proposed budget?
Yeah, I'll have to get back to you, and actually, the person who works on that is out sick today, so.
Oh, okay, okay. If you could just submit that one also to Council President, because you know, some things just stand out when you're looking through a page.
Yeah, understood, and I appreciate that you look at it.
And I, I have a few more, and I'll come back on the second round. In the Budget and Brief, the FY '24 original budget for the court cost reimbursement is $10 million, but the current estimate is $6.5 million. So do we anticipate receiving the full budgeted amount by the end of the fiscal year?
That is something, if we could, I'd like to have a conversation with you outside of public hearing.
Understood, okay, and so we will get that scheduled, okay? Really quickly, for water revenue, also in the Budget and Brief, there's an estimated 55.2% decrease in revenue from the state and federal government for watershed assessment and redevelopment projects, and so could you just explain that reduction?
Yeah, I'll have to get back to you on that one, too.
Pardon me?
I'll get back to you on that also.
Okay. And then I'll send you the, the second question, because water originally budgeted 37 million transfer from the Rate Stabilization Fund in FY '24, but now the current estimate is 62 million, and FY '25 budget is 57 million, so if you could just explain also with that.
And that one, I can probably talk through a little bit now. So, collections in general are a little lower this year than anticipated, and when collections are lower, they need to pull more from that, that fund.
Right, but I, I think the concern here is that there's really been an increase in reliance on the Rate Stabilization Fund, and so how, how do we?
That is a legitimate concern, and something that obviously will be part of what water considers in their next rate case, and when they look at their expenditures.
Okay, I'll come back on the second round, because I still have a ton of questions that I need to get on the record. Thank you, Mr. President. All right, now we're back in business. Thank you so very much, and thank you, Council President. So to that point, I just want to get this one finished, because this is of concern, because we know we'll have some additional borrowing coming in the, the coming years. But how much remains in the Rate Stabilization Fund, based on the FY '24 estimate and the FY '25 contribution?
Yeah, I'll have to get back to you.
That's, okay, I'll give you, I'll send you the last question too, as well. Okay, well, in FY '23, water had 250,000 in Class 500 contributions, in FY '24, $6 million allocation in Class 500, FY '25 proposed is $6.5 million. So what's the, the significant, same thing?
Yeah, yeah, get back, yeah, on contributions?
This is Class 500.
Yeah, I'll have to get back to you on, on water's Class 500.
Okay, because it is a significant bump, it is 250 to 6 million, to 6.5 million in just a two-year fiscal period, okay? In the Budget and Brief again, Office of Sustainability has a 539% increase in grants revenue from FY '24 to FY '25. And so we recognize that that office is overperforming and bringing in grant revenue, obviously. Do you believe that we are properly resourcing this department to manage all of the new grant dollars that they have?
I do, yes, through, yeah, I, I think we are.
Because some of those, I'll say, Class 100 increases were achieved through caucus amendments, and you know, typically, the caucus amendments aren't included in the, the new proposed budget for the next year, and so I just want to get that on the record as we move down this process.
Understood, I thought you might.
Of course, of course. We talked about BSR yesterday, and you sort of went through that over the life of this proposed five-year plan, that there's a decrease in $21.8 million for the BSR contributions, and I just wanted to get on the record there, that we know the city is likely to face some type of challenging, you know, economic time at some point over the five-year plan, particularly because, in, in addition to that, though, our fund balance will be relatively low. And so I just wanted to ask for the record, what conditions would this administration consider necessary to tap into IR or BSR? Recognizing that BSR has different rules around how you, and when you can tap into it.
Right, and just for context of the answer, by the end of the plan, we're at 265 million in the fund, which is more than we've ever had in, in a rainy day fund, so that, that's a big help. I think we would really want it to be like a real fiscal emergency to tap into that, and what exactly that would be, we'd probably have to kind of see it to, to know, but, you know, I think the, the idea behind that is it's got to be something extraordinary for you to, to pull into it.
And I only ask because of the initial proposal relative to putting the dollars in IR versus BSR.
Oh, you were saying IR, not BSR, sorry.
Well, I'm saying both, but I understand that BSR, you, it has to be certain economic conditions in order for you to tap into BSR. I ask that because in the proposed budget, there's contributions going to IR more so than BSR, I'm, I'm sorry, for appropriations, for the, for the spring mid-year.
Right, but over the life of the plan, there's much more emphasis on the rainy day fund than on the recession reserve fund. there's much more emphasis on the rainy day fund than on the recession reserve fund.
Right, but the... And so I will tell you why I ask this. You know, originally, when we approved the budget for FY '24, there was a large... It was a bump, the year that we had to spend down on the federal dollars. So it would have been a larger contribution to BSR, which would have been around, like, what, 141 or 171 million?
Something big, yeah.
Right, but now, because of the way this plan is spending, that changes. And so while it's more regular, it's a lower number, and it's also $21 million less, or 21.8 million less than what we originally approved in FY '24.
Over the five years, yes, yes.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so the question... I'm sorry, what is...
Right, so the question is...
Under what conditions would we pull out of the... So...
And why the emphasis on IR versus BSR?
Yeah, because the BSR, we did according to the formula. There's a set formula. The IR is both more flexible on putting in and taking out. And that's why, in terms of putting in, that was our emphasis.
Right, okay. We can certainly circle back to that. I think it's, you know, we have a difference of opinion only because we thought that the contributions would be made in a certain way based on when the federal spend down would happen. But because the new budget is so different than the last relative to spending, it doesn't allow for the larger contribution that we originally anticipated earlier in the life of the plan.
Understood. We still... We still obviously get to a pretty healthy amount in there, but I understand your point.
Right, right, okay. So going back to now the budget in brief, there is a projected 10.19% increase in personnel services obligations and a projected 4.12% increase for FY '25. Could you just explain the increase in personal services obligations for FY '24 despite our significant vacancy rate? And I did try to ask yesterday, in preparation for this question, exactly the numbers around vacancy in city employees.
Yeah, so I think the biggest reason for the increase in '24 is probably the three extensions.
You said the three?
No, not three, is the collective bargaining increases. So there are increases in '24 for all of our unionized employees.
You said an increase for...
Increase under our collective bargaining agreements for all of our unionized employees. So that would increase our personal services cost.
Got you, got you. Okay, I will send you the other questions around the vacancy rates and also the projected vacancy allowances that are in the budget, because I think that'll be important information for us to understand how you all are looking at this budget based on what your vacancy allowance rate is going to be. Okay, because things have just changed so much from what we approved previously. I will come back on the next round, okay?
Thank you. You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilman Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President Johnson. Okay, okay, all right. Thank you, Council President Johnson. I want to come back to the MPI question that Councilwoman Cindy Bass proposed. We have a number of projects in the city of Philadelphia that are still outstanding when it comes to the MPI funding. Was, you know, including the alleyways, the driveways, so forth. I wanted to know if we can get a better understanding of when that funding... How can we do a better job with monitoring the funding so that the projects that we're going to be... That need to be rendered to neighbors in our districts are able to go through in an effective, efficient manner? Meaning, you know, we have a number of alleyway requests left. We have a number of driveway requests left. We have a number of other MPI-assigned projects left. What is it going to take in terms of a loan or other services that are going to need it to make sure that those projects are going to be rendered and completed?
Yeah, I mean, from our perspective, we monitor expenditures, the uses... And then when invoices come in, we make sure they get paid as quickly as possible to do exactly what you're saying. Make sure that, you know, when projects are ready to go, we have the funding available and the money can be spent, and then the projects can move forward.
Thank you. Could you provide our office with, or just all accounts if they want, but our office with information on how many... You know, how much more... In order for us to fulfill the amount of driveway requests and, you know, connect that with the amount of funding that we actually have, how much more funding we may need in order to fulfill more... As many as much driveway, alleyway, whatever, requests that are going to be given over the next year or so when it comes to the city?
So we can... Okay.
Yeah, Rob, I just want to also, Leanne, you can give your response, but also, I'm working day-to-day with Janay Mumford and the MPI team to do an overall assessment on MPI in general. So we can also provide you some additional information in conjunction with the information that Mr. DeBoeck provides. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I just also want to provide another question around... Under the Department of Finance and FY '25's proposal, there's $3 million that's being allocated for community development. Could you provide further details on the specific initiatives and approaches to community development undertaken by your office?
So I think what that is, is there community development grant money that shows up in our office and then is actually used by... Used elsewhere in the government? We're just the kind of entity where the grant money comes in?
Got it, got it. That was helpful. Revenue provides tax relief to individual homeowners and business taxpayers through a taxpayer assistance and credit program. And FY '23, 75% of eligible homeowners receive relief, and 80% is the target for 2024, 2025. Do these numbers include landlord homeowners or owner-occupied homeowners? Can we have a breakdown of the homeowners receiving relief by district and by their status?
Yes, we'll provide that.
Thank you. And we also just... I just also wanted to add this important question. The Department of Revenue proposal states that after several years of successfully working with minority-owned businesses, revenue will increase its OEO participation goal from 48% to 50%. Could you elaborate on revenue's achievement in collaborating with minority-owned businesses? How many businesses have success stories to share as a result of this partnership? Also, with a 2% increase in the Office of Economic Opportunity participation, what is the additional funding amount, and where will it be allocated?
Deputy Revenue Commissioner Dolores Davis is going to come and address that question.
Dolores Davis, First Deputy Revenue Commissioner. Good morning to Council President and Council members. We have been working with very large collection agency companies for a very long time that are minority-owned. And also, our current training and development vendor that provides much of our training professional development services is minority and female. And so over the years, we also work very closely collaboratively with the Office of OEO to make sure that when we put out an RFP, we are making sure that if there are any eligible minority businesses, that we're reaching out to them. So we have been very successful. This is the third year that we're increasing our minority participation, and we're really proud of the work that we're doing. We believe that the vendors we're working with also put a lot of emphasis on diversity and making sure that their subs are also diverse. So we're really happy to work with those agencies. I know you asked for some numbers.
Yeah.
It would be helpful to... For us to take... Come back and give you those numbers.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. If you give the numbers, success stories, as well as the outcomes of those minority businesses, that'd be great. My last question that I have, it is... How do I say this? This is one of the best budgets that the city has ever seen in terms of expenses. You know, the questions, I have to do a little bit more about the details in terms of how are we going to implement a lot of these important measures? So those things are wonderful about what this budget presents. However, one of the concerns that I think several council members have thought about is like, you know, we don't have a sense of something that is very likely is going to happen, which is why our Council President put together the Tax Administration Review Process, that we are in a position where there may be a need one day to increase taxes. And what do we... And also, to go into the... What's that fund? Not increase, I'm saying, we don't want to, but we got to be in a position where we talk about this. You know, we don't want to be in an economic downfall. What steps is the administration going to be doing to make sure that we're increasing revenue so we don't have to be in a position where we have to go into increasing taxes for the city of Philadelphia? Because that fund is getting lower and lower each year. And we need to find out to, you know, how are we going to make sure that we don't have to tap into it? So what's our plan for that?
Yeah, and I mean, as we talked about, we really believe that the investments that we make throughout this plan will lead to growth for Philadelphia, and that will lead to increased revenues. So it's really everything that we've been talking about, everything we talked about yesterday, everything that departments will come to talk to you about over the next however many weeks is all designed with making Philadelphia a more attractive place for people to work, live, play, visit. And all of those things will help drive revenues.
Yeah, no, no, thank you. And I just want to say for the record, the goal is not to increase taxes, but the goal is for us to put ourselves in a position so we can find other ways to revenue as opposed to focus on wage and earned income tax, which affects our residents, because I know they would be of an uproar if they have to increase taxes. So I just want us to come up with more creative ways to come more... If there's a plan, want to come up creative ways for additional revenue? Because Council President, I mean, Council Majority Whip Thomas has said something earlier about attracting more businesses. It's going to be key to our tax revenue plan, and I would like to hear more about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gode here.
Thank you, Council President. Since we've touched on this issue of tax cuts a good amount today and yesterday, I did want to make a few comments about that. First, you know, I hope we're waiting for the Council President's Tax Reform Commission to issue its recommendations before we take any action. As a council, you know, I think everybody understands that we have to be extremely thoughtful about this. Last year, when we approved the tax cuts, it was in light of an $800 million surplus from, you know, the federal aid that we received during the pandemic. And, you know, so we... This is a non-recurring source, but the tax cuts will, you know, that we made will outlast that. Also, in terms of, you know, what happened last year and its impact, the wage tax cuts save the average Philadelphian $21 a year. The business tax cuts would save a company with a net income of $1 million $1,800 a year. I understand that we want to send a signal to business that Philadelphia is a good place to do business. I also want to do that, and I also want us to see growth. But I think we also have to recognize that there's another side to this that has to be considered, and it's that every tax cut we make does cut revenue from the city that could be used for services and could be used to keep, you know, our balances healthy. You know, in looking at the five-year plan, by the end of FY '29, the fund balance is projected to be $14.4 million, less than 1% of revenue. So all of these goals have to be thought of concurrently, right? The desire to have business growth, but also what that does to the city coffers and our ability to fund services. And then lastly, you know, I just want to point out that Mayor Parker's proposal, which has a hefty amount of services that we all like, keeps taxes flat. And that in testimony yesterday, both Rob DeBoeck and Aaron Platt, one of the mayor's top aides, you know, expressed again and again that if we want to be able to deliver on this vision of a clean and safe city, we need the revenue to fund the services and programs to do that. So just offering, you know, a perspective and hope to be able to comment more fully when there's an actual recommendation from the commission. My question or questions are about the Housing Trust Fund. So Philadelphia's Housing Trust Fund is billed as a dedicated source of local revenue that's vital to addressing the city's affordable housing needs. Through the city's density bonus program, developers may build larger than their zoning would typically allow if they include affordable housing in their development. But rather than actually constructing affordable units on site, developers almost always choose to make a, quote, "payment in lieu" of providing affordable housing to the city. However, not once since this payment in lieu option began has these density bonus payments led to a proportionate increase in the actual Housing Trust Fund. This means essentially that, you know, the city is cheating neighborhoods that are seeing overscale development, you know, out of their benefits, and that we are underfunding affordable housing programs citywide. So can you tell me how many of these payments in lieu have been directly allocated to the Housing Trust Fund? And are they leading to a commensurate increase in the trust fund? Or are they just backfilling existing commitments to the fund?
Yeah, I can get back to you on that, and I'll put it in the context of overall funding, because, you know, a percentage of our expenditures each... We make a contribution to the Housing Trust Fund each year based on a calculation as a percent of our expenditures. So I will get you something on trust fund funding overall and include what you just asked.
Sorry, are you talking about the charter change that happened? Okay, so that is a commitment to the Housing Trust Fund. But outside of that, the density bonus program that has existed for years was always intended as a source of funding for the trust fund. Separate and apart from the charter change, which happened a couple of years ago, what has been, you know, how has that process worked in terms of the density bonuses that are generated by development and what goes to the trust fund?
Yeah, no, definitely, we'll get you that and put it in the overall context of the trust fund's financial position.
Okay, but you've been mostly... This has been at the administration's discretion since the program began and includes a lot of your input. Do you have a sense of what has happened?
I don't, so that's why I want to get back to you.
Okay. Can you also provide a breakdown of where Housing Trust Fund dollars have been spent and for what purposes?
Yeah, we will work with planning and development on that.
Is there a process by which you look at, you know, where high-density development is happening in the city and look at those balances in the trust fund to determine, you know, what communities really need to see the impact of these dollars?
Yes, and that's a process that planning and development goes through, so I do think that happens.
Oh, can you describe how that takes place?
I think that's a planning and development question. They're the ones who really do that.
Okay, but you'll be able to get back to us with a detailed sort of assessment of where those funds have been spent as compared to where they've been generated?
Like I said, we'll work with planning and development on that and see what they can provide.
Thank you so much. I wanted to talk a little bit about water assistance. So our constituent services team receives dozens, if not hundreds, of calls from constituents asking for help with their utility bills. So we greatly appreciate all of the assistance that revenue provides for water bills. But I wanted to learn a little bit more about water shut-offs. So can someone talk about the demographics of customers who have faced water shut-offs in recent years? What neighborhoods they live in and what their average income level is?
Good morning, Councilmember.
Good morning.
Let me see. I'm just going to check and see what stats I have with me for shut-offs today. I can, in general, though, share with you that many protections have been put in place over the last few years through, again, through data matching. We have protected households with seniors, households with children, income levels that have been protected through data matching from shut-off. income levels that have been protected through data matching from shut-off. We also have had the Raise Your Hand program so that if somebody who also identifies with one of those groups was not identified through data, they have the opportunity to also be protected from shut-off. So the number of households that are eligible for shut-off at this point has declined dramatically. This season, we have roughly approximately 2,000 households that were sent shut-off notices leading up to the April 1st shut-off date.
Okay, can you tell us some, you know, something about the demographics of those 2,000 households? And also, how do we assess whether, you know, our shut-off policies and procedures are meeting the needs of these households, particularly those facing financial, you know, significant financial hardship and other barriers to payment?
Okay, well, again, we do share the, the goal of making sure that anyone who's eligible is enrolled in those programs. We have partnered with other agencies, the Office of Engagement and Opportunity, to do outreach to those who are eligible for a shut-off notice. So they are doing door-to-door, you know, sending notices, leaving notices if they have not reached the customer to try to make sure that they understand that they're eligible for the program. We also have the CAP program so that people can apply for water assistance programs and, you know, it's consolidated application, basically. And we are also working with a design team in the CAO's office to evaluate the assistance program application to see what barriers are there and that are, you know, really keeping people who are eligible from taking advantage of, of it so that we can identify opportunities to improve the process so that we can increase enrollment.
Okay, I'd love for you to get back to us with some information about those 2,000 households and also information about how they fell through all those cracks, right? I'm assuming that the people who are in that 2,000 number you tried to do outreach to or you've talked to them about a plan and for whatever reason it didn't work. So we, it would just be good to understand more about that population so that we can see if there's something more that we need to do as a city.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Mr. DeBeau and members of the administration.
Good morning.
Just have a couple of questions related to the five-year plan again. And, and where we can, where are we anticipating growth, right? Because from looking through the budget, when this, when the section that describes the city's fund balance for FY '24, basically stating that the fund balance was bolstered by, you know, growth in ARPA and things like that. But then it says, "At the same time, this projection reflects reduced revenue estimates primarily driven by real estate transfer tax, business income receipts tax, which are coming in lower than projected in FY '24," right? So that's, that's lower. Then you look on page, what's it, 37, "Invest in Philadelphia. The fragility of the city's fiscal health will continue to be a challenge beyond FY '25," right? So that's just all through your, your own, you know, five-year plan. Just to make another note, as of December 2023, Philadelphia's unemployment rate dropped to 3.7, but is expected to increase through 2026. And it goes on to say, "With continued inflation, labor shortages, and continued uncertainty, the city's budget faces twin constraints of operational feasibility and limited funds. These circumstances are layered on top of many unmet needs and challenges related to Philadelphia's persistent poverty, aging infrastructure, high fixed and inflexible costs, and increasing need for public safety efforts and other challenges," right? And so as I'm looking through here, I don't see any areas of growth other than the anticipated growth of 8% from the residential, residential real estate taxes. And so my question is, have, has the administration, have finance done any projections on where this expected and anticipated 8% increase in the assessment will be? Because from typically, from my understanding is that, particularly in the 5th district, where the values have been traditionally under-assessed for years significantly, we are in a position where our neighborhoods are becoming more popular and could see of the bulk of that increase. So can you tell us or show us where this anticipated 8% growth will be?
Yeah, I just want to, one clarification before. So it's not, for example, on the wage tax that we're not showing any growth. It's that we're showing less growth than in last year's plan. So there's still growth in the range of 3% to 4% a year when we get to '26 to, to '29. So there's still, there's still growth in there, just not as much as, as the year before.
Right, but then we, we're doing a millet shift from the, from the city side to the school district side. So then we're losing that money as well. So whatever growth we are anticipating with that 3% to 4%, we're already conceding that over to the school district.
So 3% to 4% increase in the wage tax would generate more than $22 million. It would, it would outweigh that shift. And I mean, if you look at what we've shown in our plan, we do show overall revenue going down after '25 because we lose the, the federal money. And then it starts to grow from there, gets back up to the '25 level in FY '28, and then keeps, and then grows again in '29. So we do show growth, it's just kind of off a lower base because we're losing the federal money.
And with that, that anticipated growth, right? And if we have this millet shift, and this year is anticipated to be $22 million, but we know that our commercial real estate assessments will probably decrease by a significant amount given the lack of activity in, in the center of the city, what is our plan to continue to provide the school district with that same amount of money if our real estate tax revenues are lower?
Yes, so that reduction in real estate tax revenue, that billion dollars in appeal loss that we talked about, that's built in to that number, so that $22 million already assumes the, the big appeal loss.
Yeah, that's for, that's for maybe FY '25, but about moving forward.
Yeah, so moving forward, we think that we'll have kind of taken the commercial hit through those appeals. We won't see any growth in '25, and then in '26, you know, as interest rates start to come down, we'll start to see a basically inflationary increase in, in the property tax. So there'll be some growth for the district out of that.
Getting back to my original question, have you all looked at where these, this 8% growth in residential real estate will, will be?
So that is a, a citywide assumption. As we get more detail from OPA, we will come back to council members and kind of show them a district-by-district breakdown of where we think that is.
So what, I guess, what gave, what, what data did you use to come up with this assumption, essentially? If it's a citywide assumption where, I mean, you had to have picked certain places to figure out where, where this growth is? Can you describe to us, I guess?
Yeah, it's, it's really based on citywide information that we see on, on the residential market. So what we've seen is kind of global, but as we get more refined information, we will come back to council.
So yeah, what, I'm just going to ask, what areas have you seen this, this residential growth in, in the market?
Yeah, what I'm saying is I won't, don't have that, but I will as we get more information and we will come back to you and walk you through that.
Thank you. I have a few questions on your data systems. Can you provide an overview, overview of the current data systems in use and like their primary functions and the types of data they manage? Because it was mentioned earlier that you don't have data for homeowners, I guess, to do outreach directly. And so I'm just figured, I mean, just trying to figure out what systems you use because I have a data system where I can get the info for homeowners in, in the city. And so I want to see what, what are you using?
There's a question for revenue.
Good morning, council member.
Good morning.
The city has several different sources of data, and we have property ownership, ownership information. What we struggle with is identifying properties that are owner-occupied, and those are the ones that are eligible for the assistance programs. And that's the data that, you know, we really struggle to. I don't have a source right now that can cleanly identify owner-occupied properties.
I, I, I'm just saying that I, I use the data to, to, to find owner-occupied property. I mean, that's how I got here. So, you know, it is there, is out there. I just think that we really need to look at other sources to, to get the data so we can target the folks that are really, who we really need to target that are most affected by this, this, this growth, right, in residential real estate that we're going to see. Because I can tell you, it's probably going to be in neighborhoods like Strawberry Mansion, Ludlow, Poplar, those areas that I represent, where there is a lot more interest in, in, in those areas than they have been in the past, you know, 20 years. And so I really will hope that the city targets those folks to let them know that the great programs that we have exist. You know, you know, we have the best in the country, but there are some challenges with those programs. And I have a, a question related to Homestead and Loop. We've been getting a lot of calls from constituents stating that they, when they apply for Loop, they get knocked off of Homestead. And so it's, it's causing issues with their mortgage company and things like that, and it's causing, it can cause them to go into default. And so what, are you aware of that as being the issue one? And if so, like what can be done to fix that?
I have heard that, and just to your earlier comment, I would appreciate to have conversations with you that could potentially improve the data that we use to identify owner-occupied properties. So I'll be happy to talk with you about that. To your second point, we have heard that, well, first, I just want to say, homeowner cannot have both Homestead and Loop.
Yes, understood.
And so they have to make the choice between one or the other. And it can sometimes be a complicated choice to make, which is why we did prepare a worksheet for homeowners to use to see which one they benefit from most to make that decision. Recently, I have heard a few taxpayers have come forward to say that they made the wrong decision. And in that case, we have, you know, reverted back to the program that they were enrolled in.
So, I mean, that, so that's not, so my, my question is, we, we, we got a call from a constituent who applied for Loop. It takes however many months for that to apply, but in the meantime, as his application is pending for Loop, he was dropped from Homestead because his application was pending with Loop. And so now he's liable for the full tax amount rather than getting a discounted amount from one of the programs. And so I'm asking, are you aware of that being an issue? And how can we resolve that issue to allow him or, or them to stay on Homestead until their Loop application fully is approved?
Okay, I'm sorry, I better understand your question now. So for instances like that and that, that property owner, you can certainly send that to us and we'll take a look at it. It is a matter of timing. We, in the Department of Revenue, approve the Loop application, and then the tax is not adjusted until we receive a recertification. And we do work very closely with the Office of Property Assessment and have provided them with data recently that we think will help close that gap for some of those customers that fell into that category. But we can certainly take a look at the account that you have identified and see what we can do to assist the customer.
Yeah, I mean, a credit would be essential here, you know, because he has to pay, yeah, his, his mortgage increase, as council president mentioned earlier today, his mortgage increase because, you know, he was in limbo with these tax programs. So I would love to reach out to your office and provide that constituent with your information. And I heard, heard the bell, Mr. President. I have questions. I'll wait till the next round. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
What, can I just add one more comment? Deputy Rebecca Lopez-Chris just informed me that her team is working to make a system change to ensure that the Homestead is not removed until the Loop is recertified. So that is something that we have in progress. Thank you.
John, the chair recognizes councilmember Mark Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for clarifying that. That is a, a big concern that we've had also. And I guess while we're talking about that, the, as you mentioned, the communication between OPA and, and revenue. And we know OPA, we put a lot of money into the CAMA system, and that's up and running. And we were told once that was up there that the communication between either assessment value changes or assessments in general would then be directly sent over to revenue. Do you guys get that information soon as OPA makes those adjustments?
Yeah, so like I mentioned earlier, we do work very closely with the Office of Property Assessment. We meet with them regularly to address any concerns that are affecting taxpayers. The, I can just speak to the process within revenue as it relates to the Philadelphia Tax Center. So, and I can say that there have been improvements in recent years since we went live with the Philadelphia Tax Center in the processing and the speed of processing for those on the revenue side. When the Office of Property Assessment recertifies a property, it is sent to revenue, and revenue picks that up on a nightly basis now. And within 24 to 48 hours, a bill is issued for that.
See, as soon as their appeal is completed, within 24 hours, you guys generate a new bill?
24 to 48 hours within, from the receipt of revenue receiving that information.
But it's automatic, right? They put it in their CAMA system, you guys get it.
They put it in the CAMA system. There's a data sharing environment, the Data Bridge, where data is pushed to. So they push it to the Data Bridge, and revenue picks it up nightly and processes it.
So that's every night? So within, so we, we could tell people, soon as that's done, you guys should have a new bill available?
Yeah, that's already, that's already the process. So we pick it up, we process it nightly, and a bill is generated within 24 to 48 hours and sent out to the customer.
That's great, because it wasn't like that.
No, it wasn't.
And how long has that been in effect?
Since we went live with rollout two of the Philadelphia Tax Center, which was in the fall of 2022.
Okay, then we have some problems, because there's people that are getting appeals heard and six months still not receiving their new bill. So there must be a glitch somewhere. And we've worked with your office within the last two or three years on individual cases that we were able to get resolved. But there's been six-month lags before a new bill has been generated. What would be the reason for that since it's automated?
It is a, the process is, it requires inter-agency processes. The process that I just referred to is strictly within revenue. I think that there, it would be helpful for the Office of Property Assessments to probably talk through their processes when it's their hearing.
So, right, okay. And we'll have to, and you guys will both be here at the same time because OPA, I guess, will take time to get it to you. But you pick it up every day, even though they were saying that it takes 30 days for you guys to get it?
It does not take 30 days for us to get it, no. That may, that may have been the timeframe that was reported prior to us going live with Philadelphia Tax Center.
Okay, all right. And then as far as senior frees, and I know revenue, the, the applications and PACE net is being increased. Are we increasing our new forms for that increase in PACE net from the Commonwealth?
I'm going to defer to Deputy Rebecca Lopez-Chris to answer that.
Good morning, council member. The, good morning. The, the eligibility income level for senior frees is directly tied to that PACE net number. So if PACE net number changes, then we have to, we update all the.
But on the applications where it has the, the values, are we, you know how you put PACE net value for seniors to be eligible if you're single, if you're?
Yeah, we have to, we'll make that update.
Okay, all right, because I think that's important to know that we need to make sure that there's a lot of people that just miss that. And And I think the one question that Jeff, Councilmember Young, had mentioned about being dropped from one relief program as soon as you apply, you've made that adjustment or you're making that adjustment.
That's correct.
It won't be, they won't have to drop Homestead in order to apply for Loop or vice versa.
Right, so there's kind of two processes happening. There's the process when folks submit an application on paper and that requires some people, some people process changes. And then also some, when folks apply online, we need to make some system changes. One quick thing I'd like to add about the senior freeze eligibility. Now that folks can go back five years, they, the eligibility. Sorry.
You could think that through and send us the information.
Yeah, we'll send it to you, because I don't, I don't want to misstep. But it is, now that they go back five years, it, they, what we are looking at is what was the eligibility five years ago, right? And so it's different, it's going to be different.
But if they go back five years, if they weren't eligible but then all of a sudden are eligible, then they would only get the two years that they were eligible for.
What is, what is the earliest that they were eligible for the program?
Right, okay, all right, that's good. The auto-enrolling, and we talked about Homestead for people. How do we know how many people are not in Homestead? What percentage are not in Homestead if we don't know how many people own homes?
So the Census Bureau provides estimates. And every year, or as we do our analysis, we look at data that the Census provides and then we compare it to the data that we have. So it's, I would say it's probably very close to accurate.
Okay.
But it's, it's not the same data source.
And do we work with, like, when people buy homes and stuff to make sure when they're purchasing homes that they have the option to do a Homestead at that point?
I have, yes, I've had that conversation with, with a few folks that I think that is a process that could be improved, that if there was a way to include Homestead applications within closing documents or within the closing process, I think that would be, that would be, that would alert people to the program much sooner. I know that when I bought a home, my Realtor just did it. Like, he said, oh, you need to fill this out. But I want to make sure that all Realtors do that.
Is that something we should make a requirement? Or do you think it's something we need to do? Or is that just something that's done through regulations or through policy?
I think we'll have to look into what the legislative answer is there.
All right, thank you. And one last thing, because I know my time's up. Auto-enrolling, and we mentioned that if we could, if people purchase a home or live in a home, obviously, we don't know if they decide to move somewhere else or they leave it and rent it and whatever, and we have to figure that case by case. But even with TAP, right, and water revenue, and I recently was auto-enrolled in TAP. I'm not eligible. So, you know, what the criteria is that we use, how do we double check to make sure that since I was auto-enrolled, now I'm removed, thank you for removing me. But I have, when I received my first bill and I saw a discount, I said, oh my God, what's going on? But that, that could be a challenge, because the ratepayers pay the difference for the people who are in TAP and the people who aren't eligible get in. How do we, how do we put those checks and balances in?
I think that you bring up a really, really important issue with auto enrollment. There is not a single source of income data in, across the city. We have flags for any number of things. But there's not going to be a single source where we can know someone's, someone's exact income. So we have had to weigh the benefit of having folks get into the program against potentially sweeping up folks who may not be eligible. What we try to do is communicate this change and make sure that folks understand the program and whether or not they, they might not be eligible.
Because some people, when they get that, they say, oh, great, a discount. They may not never know. And right, so now they're paying a discount price for a long period of time.
Yes, it's, it's something that we, as we're looking at other auto enrollment programs, it's, it is, that's one of the biggest challenges, is not being able to really pinpoint somebody's income and trying to, trying to weigh the risk of that.
But can we use the tax returns as a, as a?
So we don't receive, so because wage tax is paid for by the employer, we don't receive individual tax returns from, from residents.
Except for the school tax.
I'm sorry?
Except for the school tax.
It's self-reported and that's only on short-term earned income, so it's not the whole thing.
Not income, so, okay, all right, thank you. Hopefully, we could figure out a way to clear that up. And what happens if somebody's on that for several years and didn't realize it? And then we catch that, you know, all these folks are on TAP that shouldn't be on there?
I don't think that the city can appropriately try to back bill someone. But I think it's, we would need, we, the goal is to bill as accurately as possible.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. We are now embarking upon our second round. No, we're in the second round. Y'all spoke the first round, we're in the second. You didn't speak? None of you? Okay, excuse me? Did Chair recognize this Councilmember? Nina Ma.
Thank you. No problem. A biggie backy. Oh, Horace doing what?
We're good. Nina first, and then we'll go Kathy Lizada, and then we'll go to, and then we'll officially be in the second round, then rule.
Okay, so I had the question, sort of a follow-up on much what has been asked, particularly what my colleague Isaiah Thomas was kind of trying to get to around, what are our plans for revenue growth? I had a question about the econometric analysis of your long-term investment doing the little safe, clean, green. Do you have a sense of when that's going to start paying off?
So, I would say that, you know, it probably starts to pay off relatively quickly as, you know, as we have success and people start to feel safer. So I think it's probably relatively quickly.
So you don't really actually have a model set out saying, we're going to invest so much, we're investing so much money, and what is the outcome for that? Because that can then be tied into what other revenue growth-producing measures do we need to take to match up to really have real growth?
Right, I don't think there, there's a really good model that would make that link. So I think for an econometric firm, that's not something that they would, that they would be doing.
So we don't have a sense of when all this will be actually?
I think it'll start.
Profitable.
I think it'll start quickly, I do, but it's not in their model.
The next question I had was about the increase in millage. Have we taken into account what we're going to, we don't know when, but what the state will be changing in how much it will be giving to the school district? And is that tied in?
Yeah, sure. So the governor's budget proposes a $240 million increase for the school district. And that was part of what we considered when we thought about our millage shift.
So that means our millage increase was still needed after that investment that the governor is potentially going to make?
Yes, so the school district, what the school district says is that the governor's proposal was an important first step in meeting the requirements of the Commonwealth Court ruling of getting towards adequate funding. And our millage shift is another step in that process. But there's clearly more the state needs to do to get to where the school district.
The reason I ask is if the state sees us increasing our millage, will they then say, oh, they're going to take care of it themselves, we don't know. So that advocacy needs to continue.
I think sometime the opposite happens, where they'll say, city's not doing anything, why should we? So we wanted to show that we had a commitment.
All right. And another question I had was about this pandemic that we just came out of, right, or coming, still coming out of. This was somewhat of an unforeseen global economic shock. Going forward, is there someone aware in the budget where I haven't seen that, that we actually have a proactive stance? Because we live in a world that's really small and we're going to have more of these. So what have we built in and where have we built in this anticipation of having to have another issue like this?
Yeah, and that's really, that's what you have the rainy day fund and a fund balance for. And that, that's what those are supposed to help with. Obviously, you know, we had never seen anything like the pandemic before. And hopefully, there's nothing like it again. You can't really plan in a five-year plan for that kind of catastrophic falloff in revenue that we show.
Do we have a sense of what it would take if that were to happen? Meaning, do we have, it may not reflect in the numbers of the budget, but have we, as a city, put together a proactive plan that would be put into motion?
Oh, you mean operationally, yeah.
Operationally.
Yeah, and I think the people who are best able to answer that are the people from our Office of Emergency Management. But they have definitely put together plans for how to react to various scenarios.
So your dip in the general fund, in the fund balance, with respect to having a lot of federal money gone, also sort of anticipates that, that and the rainy day fund together anticipates potential issues that we would have the capacity to take care of if one were to see something like this?
So it would cushion that. But if we saw something like the pandemic and the dramatic fall, and it was a $1.5 billion loss in revenue, we don't have that built into our plan.
Right, right. And the last question I have is about program-based budgeting. You know, we hear this, that it's done. Is there, are you actually doing the analysis when you're asking for the increased or decreased next amount in the new budget? How is that tied into seeing how the delivery and success happened in order for that department to say, we need more money or not? Is there actual, like, analysis done?
Yeah, so we, we do budget by program. And by program, we have performance measures.
Right.
And we do look at those measures in determining what funding levels should be. And when departments ask for additional funding, one of the things we look at is what impact that will have on.
And the follow-up to that is, are those program work that happens connected to alleviating poverty and, you know, addressing our most vulnerable? Is every department have a metrics of that manner to see, did we do that in our, how we spent our money?
Yeah, I mean, that is one of the factors that we look at. And one of the things that we talk about, because that's one of our overarching goals.
So there's like a saying, X program did this here and we actually was able to address our poverty rate in extrapolation, not, not an exact number.
Not an exact number. I mean, really, what we're looking at is how measures tie into our overarching goals.
Yep.
Right, and those overarching goals, if they're successful, will lead to reductions in poverty.
Where would we see that? Or are we just seeing it in your request for more or less money? Is that where we're assuming that you've done that, correct?
Yes, and you, I mean, and you can see in the five-year plan and in the budget detail, the measures that we use by department.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm going through our board. And so we're still in the first round. Councilman Ketsi Lizada, and then we'll wrap up the first round with Councilman Ru Landau. We just had a small technical difficulties. And so if you press your button, right, just leave it and it'll stay on up here. But if you press it once or twice, it may go off the screen. But we're good, we're on the same page, and let's keep rocking and rolling. And so the Chair recognizes Councilman Ketsi Lizada.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have to really, I want to make a statement and then I want to follow up on, with two questions. First, I just want to say thank you to the Revenue Department who partnered with me on doing a Homestead Drive in the district where we were able to really zone in on the addresses of the individuals who had not taken advantage of Homestead yet. And we were able to go door to door and enroll people where they are, right? But what we learned from that was that residents still don't understand the program. They don't understand it and they don't trust it, right? They believe that if they enroll in this program, when they go to sell their property, the city will then penalize them for being enrolled in this particular program. And so I think it takes that one-on-one relationship or engagement with them in order to ensure them that this is a program to help them get some of that tax relief that they so desperately need. So I think we just need to figure out how we do better. I'd like to ask, what are you all doing to ensure that communities that are non-English speakers understand the program better and have access to enrolling? Because we oftentimes talk about a digital divide in, in many communities. But these programs require them to enroll online.
Good afternoon, Councilmember. That's an excellent question. I'm really happy to be able to report that this Department of Revenue recently engaged with a local, a local marketing firm to work specifically with communities that do not speak English as a first language. And that's a continuation of a project that we first started in 2020. And I think that's, it's a very important, it's a very important aspect to our outreach that we understand. I think Revenue is very, very, is very cognizant that our largest request for non-English materials is in Spanish. We translate many of our blogs, especially things that are for assistance programs, into Spanish automatically. We provide dual-language materials always, it's a given. And we've also completely translated the Philadelphia Tax Center into Spanish. We're happy to work with your office around how to improve the message. I think you bring up a great point, and it's something that we'll definitely be talking about with our vendor.
I appreciate that. You guys know that we have a very limited budget as it relates to, like, mailing and all of that. And while we try to do that and include it in all of our mailing pieces, it's really important that departments like yours take the extra step to either, you know, promote on Spanish radio or Spanish media. I have a huge constituency of folks that speak Mandarin in the district who also don't understand, who, you know, are not enrolled. And so anything we can do in languages besides English to be able to encourage folks to get enrolled is extremely helpful. I also want to add to Councilmember Gardier's request for information around the Housing Trust Fund. If we could add to her request, the list of developers who consistently take advantage of that paying into the Housing Trust Fund to avoid the affordability requirement, I would appreciate that. Because what I do want to see is, as we are meeting the goal or as we're trying to hit the goal of that 30,000 new units or housing units in the city, I want to make sure that, I want to know who the developers are or who are their partners. And if it is those who consistently want to pay to avoid the affordability, then I have a serious problem with that, right? Because the land, the available land is in the seventh and in the fifth, right? And so if they are doing projects in districts like mine and consistently avoiding that affordability requirement, then I don't think that we should be using them to meet our housing, our housing goal.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ru Landau.
Thank you so much, Council President. Thank you, Budget and Revenue. Just to follow up on some of the more recent conversations about the Homestead exemption and Loop and reaching people. It's kind of a larger conversation about how we are spending our time and money to collect taxes and revenue versus how we are spending our time finding the people who need our programs most. And I would like to see a shift in some of that. I would like to see us spend a lot of resources on some of our very successful measures to go out to continue. on some of our very successful measures to go out, to continue on what Councilmember Lozada was saying about the door knocking, the reaching people individually, the using the city's language access budget to reach as many people as possible versus the other side, which is collections, lawsuits, losing their homes. There are costs on each side. And I would like to put the front-end cost of actually reaching the people. I had a conversation with Revenue about the Water Department's practice of sending collection notices to people. They helped to explain a lot to me about how they send folks to collections, but they don't necessarily file complaints in court, which harm people's records and can cause some significant damage. But even just sending them to collections, I would rather us to take the money that we are giving to these companies and figure out other ways that we can reach these folks. I, beforehand, way beforehand, so we can figure out, should they more actively get into TAP? Are there other things that we can do with them? I was very impressed to hear that when the Water Department does reach people, that they do try to connect them to other resources once they find them. I feel like there's a massive data gap here. We finally got to the point where the Water Department figured out how to automatically enroll those who they think would be eligible, and Councilmember Squillen. But I think that we, there, you know, as the head of the Information and Technology Committee, I want to figure out more ways that we automatically enroll folks in these programs that we believe they'd be eligible for. Oftentimes, if you're eligible for TAP, you're eligible for this, you're eligible for that. Let's start there. Let's put our money there instead of putting our money into collection companies, instead of taking people's homes in court, instead of having to even get in, in plans to repayment plans that folks can't meet. Let's get them on the front end, and I am a huge partner with that. The second thing I wanted to say, oh, and I wanted to also double down on, I know there was, we used to use Philly Counts for this. We used to do a lot of door knocking. We are talking now about a city that wants to put a lot of ambassadors on the street. We want to clean and green with these ambassadors on the street. Let's also make these ambassadors, or add to these ambassadors, about people who want to help folks get enrolled, get connected to our city programs, and get connected to our low-income programs in particular. Because these are a lot of folks that we're going to have on the ground. I want to follow up. I've got a bunch. I will hold some to the second half, but I believe that you said to, to, I want to clear up something that I believe that you said to Councilmember Brooks. Councilmember Brooks was asking if, if we cut taxes, what else will you have to cut in the budget in order to offset those tax cuts? And I thought I heard you say, you don't look at it that way. And I wanted to get a little more clarity on that.
Yeah, so, I mean, we looked at all of our revenue sources, right? And that's how we balance a budget and a plan. So we'd look at our projections and then, you know, balance the plan. It's not that we say, you know, this revenue is changing by this much, and as a result, we're making reductions. And in every time that we've had wage tax reduction, we still had increases in the wage tax revenues. It's not that we have these incremental reductions and our wage tax revenue is decreasing the next year, right? They are still increasing.
Is that because more people become employees?
Yeah, every year, there's, there are changes in two things, right? How many people are employed and what they're paid? And those two things combined drive what the increase in the wage tax is. You know, add that, and then add the rate, and the rate reductions have not exceeded the combination of those two.
Okay, that's helpful. I had a simple question about your budget to start, which is that you, in FY '24, you reported that you had 139 staff members. At a, at 11, and in FY '25, you're going to have, you projected having 147 staff members, but the increase in your budget was only about $37,000. And I didn't understand how you could increase by eight staff members to 37,000.
So a couple of things. Five of those staff members are funded by grants fund, so they won't show up in our, in our general fund budget. We're also looking at the timing of when we think the new employees will come on. We think that there will be some vacancies, so there'll be time before they, they come on. And there are also kind of changes in, some employees are leaving, others are coming in, and there can be salary differentials between them. So that's why you see that, that's a small increase.
Makes sense. Couple more subjects, Council President, okay? And then, one is that I've been hearing in all my conversations with folks throughout the city of delayed payments to contractors. many of these folks have said that they're being paid extremely late. And even The Inquirer released an article on January 17th of this year that reports some Philadelphia homeless shelters have gone months or years without being paid on time. How will the city improve the payment of our central contractors? And can you tell me how many contractors' payments are outstanding?
I'm going to ask Kat, who's been actually working on this issue, to talk about it.
Yep. So long-term, for the improvement of payment to vendors is we hope to realize benefits with Opal, with replacing our financial and purchasing systems, right? So when data and systems are better linked, it's, you can first have visibility on where they are in the process, to be able to see where there's flow down in the process. That gets me to the second part of your question, which is like, how many payments are outstanding? Right now, that is difficult for us to report on because when a vendor sends an invoice to a department, it doesn't actually get entered into a system until it's ready to be paid. So that lag time at the department could be part of the delay, right? And that's not in a system for us to be able to report on. That's all basically manually tracked departmental, at the department. When we migrate to the new system, we hope to have majority of our payments come in at the point of, like, when they submit to the departments is when they're actually entering information into the system. So we know the point where the vendor believes that they have submitted for payment, and we'll be able to track that. That, though, to Council President's point, it's taking us a while to get there because we have to do this big system upgrade to get there. So in the interim, we have convened a working group to start looking at some other, so law, procurement, and finances convened a working group to start looking at some interim changes we can do to try to help alleviate the problem. We do know the more vendors enroll in ACH, which is automatic payment, the quicker they're going to get their payment. So if any, if you guys can help us push that goal, that would be very helpful. In addition to that, we are looking at upstream, any issues around contracting that can lead to a delay in payment. So for most of our payments, you have to have an active contract for us to be able to pay you against it. And so there's some complexities there that we're trying to better understand.
Thank you for working on it. If there's anything that my office can do to help with that and all of the other ways in which we could collect this data, I would rather us subcontract to entities that could help us connect the data and then give us a product in the end than to sometimes go through the process. As somebody who, as, when I ran the Human Relations Commission, it took us nine years to get a database, nine years. Let's maybe front-end that and get a product and come back. The second one, just for this round, another question is about legal settlements. The city's projected in FY '24 to have $1.1 million in settlements, and in FY '25, $1.4 million in settlements. Can you share with me how we're working to lower settlements? And can you also break down these settlements by department and categories like employment, you know, accidents, slip and falls, or anything like that?
Yeah, so I'm going to ask Cheryl and Murphy to come up and talk about what our officers' management does to try to reduce the number of claims that the city faces.
Thanks. Good afternoon. I'm Cheryl Lynn Murphy. I'm the Risk Management Council and the Employee Disability Manager. So with respect to settlements, it really depends on the category of settlement that you're referring to, and I'm not sure. So I'm going to tell you about all of them until you tell me to stop. So with workers' compensation settlements, those settlements come through the Risk Management Department, the Employee Disability Unit. We settle cases based upon the severity of the claim, the injury, the number of years the employee has with the city, the diagnosis that is presented, and also whether or not the case is in litigation. Cases that are not in litigation that settle, of course, they settle at a lower amount. Cases that are in litigation settle at a higher amount because you have an attorney involved, and you also have a fee that you have to pay. I'm going to give you an example with aviation. Their cases are settled at a higher rate because they have this litigation piece involved in it. With workers' compensation, fortunately, we can settle those cases without the involvement of the attorney, and we have a limit on how much we generally settle cases for. So for example, if a person has received a service-connected disability pension, we won't settle that case for an amount greater than about 1.5 years because we have the pension offset on that. Other cases that don't fit that model, we try to settle those at a reasonable amount. We try to be reasonable with the workers, and we also want to be reasonable with taxpayer dollars. So we're trying to get the best settlement that we can for the city, but we still want to be fair. So there are a lot of factors that go into settling cases. They're all done on a case-by-case basis. We don't just have a dollar figure, and we say, all these cases settle for that amount. So a lot goes into how we settle the cases. There's some cases that are settled through the Law Department, and they have their own discussions about the factors that I've just outlined for you. And those cases are settled differently. I'd be happy to talk to you in greater detail about how we do it, department to department, but those numbers are going to vary based upon the individual case.
Thank you for that. Can you give us, can you and the Law Department get together and give us a list? I'm curious, how many of those cases are associated with police officers? How many are slip and falls if we didn't fix a sidewalk timely and things like that? That's what I'm looking for.
Absolutely.
How we can fix things in order to minimize the amount of money we're paying out?
Absolutely. Some of those cases are going to fall under the Tort Claims Act, and we can certainly give you those numbers of cases that we settle. And some of those cases, you mentioned police officers. Those will probably be heart and lung cases. Those are going to be under employee disability. We can certainly get your numbers for that as well.
One more?
Or no?
Yeah, one more. Thank you for that, and I might follow up with you later on that, but thank you. I wanted to follow up on, let's see. So this is a Councilman Jones special, I think. It's real estate taxes. Last year, Councilman Jones asked you, what is the real estate taxes owed to us? What are the amount of taxes in Philadelphia that are owed by individuals outside of the city, and what are those collection rates? And you responded, the city responded, that principal delinquency is at $234 million. That was 80%. But $204 million of the 234 was owed by Philadelphians. $15 million was, in other parts, was outside of Pennsylvania. What are the numbers today from that fiscal year? And what are we, from now, what are this fiscal year? And what are we doing to ensure we get funds from owners outside of Pennsylvania? I believe I heard the Revenue Commissioner say that we had 67,000 tax delinquent properties. So I am curious, how many of those are, owners are outside of Philadelphia? And how much in total is owed? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. At the end of fiscal year '23, out-of-state mailing addresses, we had 3,612 accounts associated with those and $11.8 million in debt owed. For other Pennsylvania mailing addresses, we had 3,500 accounts totaling $13 million in debt. And for Philadelphia residents, we had 46,400 accounts totaling $144.8 million owed.
And you said that was FY '23, but
Yes.
Okay. Do we know where we are now in FY '24?
I think we can get updated stats.
That would be, thank you very much.
Sure.
I didn't, sorry, I did ask a collections question real quick. What are we doing to get the money to collect? So this is where I'm happy about collections, right? When do we, how, what are we doing to collect more vigorously from folks outside of Philadelphia? Or outside of Pennsylvania even?
Okay, we do file judgments against folks that are outside Philadelphia. As Chief Counsel mentioned earlier, the challenge is when ownership varies from a property within Philadelphia to a property that they own outside. Is there anything to add to that, Frances? Filing the judgments is really the action that we are able to take to ensure that we can secure that debt.
And it should be pointed out that we could not adopt a program of systematically treating people who are non-Philadelphians differently as a matter of U.S. constitutional law.
I am painfully aware. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. So we will now take a break until 1:15, and at 1:15, we will start our second round. Thank you, everyone.